Okay, we'll begin the this morning's meeting of the Planning Commission. Can I have you all stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioner McGee.
Here.
Commissioner Duquesne.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Anstott.
Here.
Commissioner Westner.
Present.
Okay, this is the time of the agenda for public comments on items that are not on the agenda today. I see no one stepping forward, so we'll move on to number five. Approval of the March 6, 2014 minutes. Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Do you have a second? Got to hit your real yes button. Motion fails. Okay, motion passed. Okay, moving on to item six, PL 13-0163, Rancho Simi Park and Recreation District. Staff.
Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Christina Buehro, Planning Staff. Before I begin my presentation on item six, I want to call your attention to a errata memorandum. It's noted as Exhibit Eight of your staff report packet, and this is just a clarification to the commission that the total number of parking spaces is 78 rather than the 72 that was noted in the staff report and in Condition Number One, which is Exhibit Five. So before you today is a request by the Rancho Simi Park and Recreation District to have a conditional use permit for Deer Hill Park, which is located at Oak Park. It's conditional use permit case number PL 13-0163. The project site is located in Oak Park, close to the LA County border and Thousand Oaks. The actual project site is located at the corner of Deer Hill and Deer Brook Road. The site is about 12.36 acres in size. The zoning for the project is split zoning. The northern portion, which abuts Deer Brook Road and before the existing building, is open space 40 acres, minimum lot size, and the rest of the park is residential planned development, two to four dwelling units per acre. It is an Oak Park area plan, and that has a land use designation of community facilities and residential eight to 12 dwelling units per acre, and the general plan designation is urban. Looking at the community, the Oak Park is actually, well, the Deer Hill Park is part of the Oak Park Zone Three project, which was approved in 1991, and the park was approved in 1992. So there's residential developments predominantly surrounding the project site, an open space to the east. Doubletree Road is abutting the project site to the south, and Medea Creek Middle School is about 758 feet west of the project site. Some pictures of the site to visually orientate yourself. This is the Deer Hill Road, sorry, Deer Hill? Yeah. Deer Hill Road, the names of the streets are very similar. This is Deer Hill Road and Deer Brook, the intersection, and the park is in the background. And this is looking north of the project site. You see here in the middle of the picture is the existing 1,160 square foot building. This is the entrance signs to the park, and this picture shows the soccer fields to the right and a portion of the baseball field to the left. So the history of the site, of the project. A conditional use permit, number 4607, was approved in 1992 for the installation, operation, and maintenance of the park. A zone change was also approved in 1992, which changed the zoning from planned community to residential planned development, and in November of last year, the current CUP application was submitted. So what the Rancho Simi Park and Rec. District is requesting is continued operation and maintenance of the park, and they would like to have a 30-year permit, and there's no new development, and some of the amenities of the park include baseball field, soccer field, pavilion area, and an existing 1,160 square foot building with public restrooms and storage. So looking at the site plan, we see that the existing building is about 20, actually, the existing building is about 11 feet in height, and the pavilion is 25 feet. And just a colored sketch of the site. The green areas is the vegetation. The gray is the existing roads, and the blue is the soccer fields and baseball diamond and tennis courts. And the, I think it's brown building in the middle is the building. So addendum to the supplemental environmental impact report was prepared by planning staff, and it was determined that this was the appropriate environmental document for this project. The supplemental environmental impact report, which was prepared in 1992 for the park, had two mitigation measures. The law enforcement and emergency services mitigation measure basically required a park redesigned to deter crime and vandalism, and that mitigation measure was completed and confirmed by a site inspection by staff. And the second one was a rare plant mitigation program, which was, it's still currently in, it's ongoing, and it's been in progress and is current to the program standards. And the two mitigation measures are detailed in your staff report with Exhibit Four. We did receive two public comments for the project, one from Caltrans saying that although this project is within a migration corridor, it's an existing use, and it's not going to impact the project. And we did get another comment from an adjacent property owner who just wanted to know what, who could use the park. It's a public park, so anybody can use it. We did have public notice, 300 feet with property owners, and an ad in the newspaper, and the staff report was on our website. And Oak Park MAC met in February to review the project, and they recommended unanimous approval of the project. So staff recommends that your commission take the recommended actions and approve the project. So we do have a representative from the Rancho Simi Park and Rec. District, Mr. Douglas Duran, here to answer any questions you may have, and I also can answer questions.
Any questions?
Oh, should we take disclosures?
Oh, that's right. My apologies. Okay, disclosures, please. Commissioner McGee.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Duquesne.
I visited the site in the last week. I'd been there previously, but I went there to refresh my memory, and I noted that there was housing for, it looked like a water pump, near the road that needed some maintenance or repair. Otherwise, the park didn't have a straw wrapper, gum wrapper, a Coke can. It was the most immaculate park I've ever seen. No graffiti. It's just a wonderful park and amenity for the Oak Park area. In addition to that, I am acquainted with Bob Coats, but my knowing him doesn't have any influence on this at all.
Commissioner Westner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anstott.
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. Questions, staff?
I have a question. Why 30 years? And I don't have any reason to oppose it. I'm just asking, why did we fix it 30? That's a long time.
There has to be an expiration date, because it's a conditional use permit, not a planned development permit, right? And 30 years is, you have to make the finding of compatibility for future, right? And it's difficult to look out over 30 years and see what the development will look like in any community. So 30 years is a long permit for the county, right? We think it's a good use. We're not going to see them again in our lifetime, but, you know, 30 years is the longest that typically we issue permits for. And we are studying the issue about some conversion of perhaps CUPs into PDs, wondering why things, some things maybe should be more in the planned development category. So Dan has been actively working on that project for a while, and so, you know, that's something that we're working on that will probably come back to your commission.
I have no objection to 30 years. I just wondered how we pick. I'm through.
I have just a general comment, and I apologize for the question, but what is the proximity of the city of Simi to Oak Park? Does the city of Simi butt up against Oak Park now, at that end of the county?
It's the...
So the district, the Parks and Rec. District covers Oak Park?
Yes.
Maybe when Mr. Duran comes up, I can ask that question. I'm just curious. I've come into Oak Park from Thousand Oaks, West Lakeside, and you can't tell where you leave one and enter the other. Just a personal observation. Okay, no other questions? Thank you. Speaker card, Douglas Duran.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Douglas Duran, and I'm a landscape architect for the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District. I would like to just take a couple of, five minutes or so just to go over the Deer Hill Park and just show you just the flavor of what the park is all about. Deer Hill is located on the northeast of Oak Park, and it encompasses, it's within the Oak Park, about eight or so parks within the Oak Park system. Back in 1992, Deer Hill was permitted as a neighborhood park, and after 98 and 99, the park was under construction, and it was open to the public back in 99. Here is a photograph showing the construction, and it looks like a Mayan temple, but it's actually the restroom facility. Like Christina mentioned, it's bordered by the Doubletree Road on the south side, and on the west side is Deer Hill Road. The park itself provides many facilities for the public, and in terms of the, I'll go over the couple of them. The two lighted basketball courts, which are open to the public, two lighted tennis courts. All of these facilities are open to public, and we provide private classes and so on. There is one baseball diamond field and a soccer field. Two playgrounds, which is, one is a preteen, and the other one is a tot lot playground. Public restroom, which is about 1,100 square feet. Two pavilions, which is, these are open picnic areas with trellises, and we call them just Pavilion A, Pavilion B, which are, can be reserved and open for the public. And one picnic area that is within the grass open area. Two parking lots, the main one, which takes approximately 57 spaces. The secondary, which is on the north side of the park, it covers about 21 spaces. And the purpose for me being here is basically for the Rancho Simi Recreation Park to request for the additional 30 years that we want to wait. So if you have any questions or anything, thank you for your comments, ma'am.
Any questions of the speaker?
Yeah, it's a beautiful park. I was wondering, though, what is the, who's in charge of maintenance of that housing for water pump? If you drive into the park, it's near the entrance. Do you know, are you familiar enough with the park to know which housing I'm talking about?
I do know, and to be honest with you, I don't know exactly who takes care of it. It's actually, definitely not the park district.
It is not the park district? Okay.
And I was probably just going to go, maybe show you an aerial.
Yeah, it's near the entrance. So it's, you know, it's housed, and it looks like a water pump, but that would be, would that be county then?
It would be probably the water tube for, maybe, I don't know exactly.
Okay, because that was the only flaw.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I ask this all the time, just for the matter of record, to keep the attorneys happy. Do you object to any of the conditions of approval that the staff has placed upon this?
No, we don't object to anything.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Duran, just for my information. With soccer field and baseball field there, is it used for organized sports like AYSO or Little League, or are those facilities strictly for the community and not really available for those other types of activities?
Yeah. Generally speaking, the park is open for general use, but there are some organizations like AYSO that basically reserve certain weekends or practices during the week that are permitted to use, let's say, a couple of hours during the week. But other than that, I mean, it's completely open to the public.
Is there staffing onsite, or are reservations made onsite?
No, we, there is a, in the, there is an Oak Park Community Center where everything is being, basically everything is called in, and we basically track all the scheduling, the reservations, and sort of that stuff.
So it's all done there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to ask me about how...
Oh, you're right. Did you grab it?
Yeah, how the two districts...
Yeah, yeah, how does that work? Like I said, Oak Park is a unique community by itself in the unincorporated. What's its proximity to the city of Simi? I don't understand how the district boundaries work.
Yeah, it's, the Rancho Simi Recreation Park District was established back in 1960, 60 or 61, I believe, and at that point, I believe, the Oak Park was jurisdiction or was next to the Simi Valley. And at that point, the park district became, developed in Simi Valley, and part of that Oak Park was adjacent to, or was incorporated to the, as part of the Rancho Simi facilities in terms of maintaining the parks and developing. So in essence, all the parks that are within the Oak Park have, is part of the Rancho Simi responsibility in terms of maintaining them.
So the other parks that are already long in existence in Oak Park, they're also under Rancho Simi Parks and Recreation?
Correct. There is approximately about eight to nine parks within the Oak Park, and it's, we maintain them.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion? Discussion?
I would just move staff recommended actions in our staff report.
Second.
Just a moment, we have staff.
I just would like to remind you of the errata memorandum that says it's 78 spaces instead of 72, and would like to request that you guys make a motion to change Condition One to say 78 parking spaces instead of 72.
I'd like to amend my motion to reflect staff recommendation regarding the errata exhibit with regard to parking spaces.
Second again.
Thank you.
Here we have a motion on the floor.
Why does that work? You got linebacker fingers, that's why.
Okay, we're good. Five zeros.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, LU 11-0048 and LU 11-0125.
This is interesting.
David Mindy Benizra? Benizra?
Where do I point this?
Before you begin, before you leave, would you fill out a speaker card?
Shoot the staff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't recognize you.
I have a threshold, Chris.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, okay, so it was just answered.
Okay, my apologies. I've got egg all in my face here. Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Rodriguez, members of the commission. My name is Holly Harris, and I'm before you today as the staff case planner for conditional use permit LU 0048 and variance number LU 0125. Before delving into the details of this case, I just want to take a minute to summarize the key points of the staff recommendation for this project. The staff recommendation is twofold. It is to deny the variance for building coverage and grant a CUP modification for a time extension for the continued use of the kennel, as modified by the Planning Commission, to adhere to the general plan zoning and all other applicable regulations. The project site is located at 4692 North Ventura Avenue, near the intersection of North Ventura Avenue and Manuel Canyon Road. The project is north of the city of Ventura and south of the community of Casita Springs. The project site is within the North Ventura Avenue Plan, is directly east of North Ventura Avenue and Highway 33, and is surrounded by agricultural development. This slide shows an aerial photo. The 1.93 acre parcel is zoned AE40 with a general plan designation of existing community and a North Ventura Avenue Plan designation of agricultural. The CUP boundary is shown here on the eastern portion of the property in this oblique photo here, and this photo shows the existing development. A residential use exists in the front of the parcel. This is the view of the CUP component of the project site from Ventura Avenue, and you can see here it's not publicly visible. So we're going to go through the history of this project real quick. The project site hosts an existing two-story, single-family dwelling, which was constructed in 1900 in some residential accessory structures and other dwellings. The kennel CUP was originally approved in 2001 with modifications in 2003 and 2006 to remove the residential component from the CUP boundaries and to allow for a time This slide shows the plan that was approved as part of the modifications in 2003 and 2006, and as you can see here, the open CUP area. Okay, well, you can see that the CUP area does not include shade structures that are included today as part of the variance. And I need to get... How do you... Oh, there we go. This slide details a 2011 code violation that was issued for unpermitted buildings, which include a shed, a kennel wash area building, which is 220 square feet, and animal shade covers along the edge of the property line that, a total approximately 5,580 square feet. The total onsite development, cumulative total, as a result of these unpermitted structures is in excess of the general plan and zoning ordinance building coverage standards. The applicant and county have entered into a compliance agreement to abate these violations. The unpermitted kennel structures are shown on the site plan in red, pink, and blue, in total approximately 6,000 square feet. The total existing building coverage is approximately 4,020 square feet over the allowed general plan and zoning ordinance building coverage. A general plan and zoning ordinance amendment, or variance, is required to permit the 4,200 square feet of existing unpermitted development. So for a little bit of background, the building coverage regulations were adopted for the purpose of regulating equestrian facilities, and it does not appear that animal keeping uses other than equestrians, such as this kennel, were envisioned as part of those regulations. A change to the definition of animal shade structures to allow attached kennels would require a countywide general plan amendment. Changes to the non-coastal zoning ordinance, including the definition of animal shade structures, were not funded by the Board of Supervisors or adopted into the Planning Division Work Plan for fiscal year 2014-2013. Should the commission adopt the staff recommendation, the CUP would be conditioned to require a zoning clearance for up to 1,700 square feet of this unpermitted development, which would bring the property up to the allowed building coverage standards under the general plan and zoning ordinance. Presumably, the additional 1,700 square feet that would be allowed, which is the difference between the existing development onsite and the maximum allowed, would be for a portion of these existing unpermitted structures. The remaining building coverage would either need to be demolished to meet the, it would need to be demolished, or it would need to meet the zoning code definition of animal shade structures as specified in Section 810734 of the zoning code. So this slide shows some examples of how those shade structures could be converted. One option includes the conversion of up to 4,000 square feet of the existing covers into shade structures that are not attached to the ground, consistent with the definition in the ordinance. The grain on the site plan shows areas that have already been converted to meet the definition of animal shade structure under the ordinance, and they do not count towards the total building area. An example of one of these structures is shown in the photo to the right.
So they could have unlimited temporary structures for that purpose?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Anstott, yes.
Thank you.
So these slides, real quickly, we'll just run through the project description. So as part of the CUP request, no additional dogs or any other intensification of use is proposed as part of the CUP modification. The proposed CUP modification is for a time extension to adjust the boundary to include an existing access easement and to legalize a portion of the unpermitted structures up to the allowed building coverage. The timelines in draft Condition Two and Exhibit Four of your staff report reflect the compliance agreement that the applicant and the county have entered into for abatement of the violations. The draft CUP conditions of approval were developed in consultation with the Code Compliance Division, the Building and Safety Division, Ventura County Animal Services, the Fire Protection District, the city of Ventura, the Agricultural Commissioner's Office, the Environmental Health Division, LAFCO, and the city of Ventura. I also have a minor addition to Attachment Four Conditions 30 through 35. Under timing, we've requested to add a sentence to each of these animal services conditions on pages 19 through 20. on pages 19 through 21 that require the applicant to submit an updated kennel license to the Planning Division prior to us issuing a zone clearance for the continued use. As discussed previously, a general plan and zoning ordinance variance is required to permit the additional 4,200 square feet of the existing unpermitted development, and that's the variance request that's before you today. This slide shows the existing site plan. Should the Planning Commission adopt the staff recommendation, Condition Two would require the applicant to revise this plan to legalize approximately 1,700 square feet of the existing unpermitted animal shade structures, and then the site plan would need to be updated by the applicant to either remove the additional 4,200 square feet or modify those as discussed in the previous slides. Any legalized structures would have to meet all applicable regulations, including zoning, building code, fire code, and animal service regulations for kennels. So we're going to quickly walk through the findings for both the conditional use component and the variance. This slide summarizes the required CUP findings. As discussed in Section E of the staff report, the findings for a CUP modification as conditioned can be made and the CUP modification is consistent with the Ventura County general plan. This slide shows the variance findings and recommendations. Planning staff has determined that three of the five required CUP findings cannot be made. The Planning Commission must make all three, or all five of these variance findings pursuant to the zoning ordinance in order to approve the project. The findings shown on this slide cannot be made because there are no special circumstances applicable to this property. Their request would not constitute a special, or the request would constitute a special privilege, and the existing building intensity would not result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship, given that the kennel was approved in 2001 and has been modified several times and is permitted within the existing regulations. So just wanted to add for the record that the proposed CUP modification and variance were noted as consistent with the requirements of the coastal zoning ordinance, and the information for this project was also posted on the Planning Division website. I'm just going to quickly walk through the recommended actions, which is to certify your review and consideration of this item. Find that the entire project is exempt from CEQA. Find the variance does not comply with the general plan or the non-coastal zoning ordinance. Deny variance LU 110125. Make the required findings to grant a conditional use permit minor modification. Grant CUP LU 110048, subject to the conditions of approval in the draft conditions in Attachment Four, and specify that the clerk of the Planning Commission is the custodian of the record. So this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about either permit request, consistency with the applicable regulations, or the permit history of this parcel. The applicant, Steve Pearlman, and owner David Brenza are also here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Disclosures?
I have the disclosures.
Yeah.
No disclosures.
Last week I visited the site. Didn't have any information that's not contained in the staff report.
Mr. Westner?
No disclosures, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Onstott?
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures. Questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Onstott?
I was looking at the aerial, is there a setback, southern setback problem here? Looks like permanent structure is right to the line.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Onstott, the site plan submitted by the applicant does show that the existing animal shade structures that are unpermitted do meet the setback requirements under the zone district.
They do meet it? Now I have a question for county council. The burden of proof for the variance is on the applicant here, or?
That's correct.
Would you explain the burden to me? Is this preponderance? Is this, what is it? Is there 51%? What do we got there?
That's a good question. I would, my thought is off the cuff that it is a preponderance, the general civil legal standard.
Okay, thank you.
I have a speaker card. Excuse me, one other question. Commissioner Adukas.
Did you see this letter from Scott O'Connor and how, how did you address his concerns?
Commissioner Rodriguez, or Chair Rodriguez, Commissioner Adukas, we did see the attachment C from Scott O'Connor, and this does reflect some of the public comments that we did receive that were also included in the staff report and are briefly discussed under Section F. One issue that is brought up in that report is this issue of an access easement. The site plan that we received from the applicant shows that the access easement is free of structures and is unobstructed. We're including that in the request for the conditional use permit because that access is needed to both access the kennel and needs to be clear of debris and obstructions for consistency with general policies for emergency access.
So staff has had this in time to, to see whether or not it fits, or if there's anything new, if there's anything that the county needs to do further?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Adukas, yes, staff has received it and analyzed it and determined that there is no change to the staff recommendation or conditions based on this public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a speaker card. Steve Pearlman. Introduce yourself and give us your address, please.
Chair, members of the commission, staff, I'm Steve Pearlman, 7811 Marin Lane Ventura, representing Mr. and Mrs. Benizra and Ventura Highway Dog Kennel, request here for both approval of CUP and request that you grant the variance. Couple of things, I have some handouts for the commission that I'd like to run through, and this way I can keep the remarks to a minimum.
If you could hand them to the clerk, please.
And a copy for staff. I'd like to start with way back when I started on this project, in about 1998-99, researching it and starting the process. And as you can see in the history of the kennel covers, dog houses, whatever we want to call them, from 2000 to 2011, there really was never an issue about what it was, what the covers were. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of paperwork regarding how many dogs, what's the average number allowed per day, to the point where we had to file logs and all kinds of things. At no time with the staff planners that we were working with, did dog houses, crates, or kennel enclosures, as they were called, come into question. Basically, they're not required to have building permit. If you're under 1,000 square feet and you're less than 12 feet in height, you do not need a building permit. One would go to, and I know several kennels I've worked with went to the building department, they said nope, no permit required, and they went on their way. When we filed in 2011, this is when we found out that this was a violation. From 2011 to present, you have some emails, I gave you some emails, and basically you can read through all of that, but since January of 2012, we have attempted to work with staff. Staff has written us emails on, I'm going to put it this way, that they believe and they agree that counting these covers as lot coverage is probably not really in anyone's best interest. All they are is a top. You have plenty of emails, I don't need to tell you exactly what they said, but basically that's the basis of it, and that they would like to treat this as you would treat greenhouse houses, which are exempt from ag, from the ag zone lot coverage, hot houses, and my favorite is the hoop structures. And I'll get into that a little bit, a little bit more. So we spent all of that time, and we were even billed for text amendment processing, which as Holly explained, then after a couple of years, I think it was two and a half years, it just didn't get done. So while we may all agree or disagree on the exact wording, or exactly how much, or exactly how it should be done, the fact was staff did an attempt to find a way so that this really wouldn't be a burden on a piece of property in ag zone that is so small, and that the ag commissioner for 15 years has said should not be in ag. Before I get into the variance, I would like to say just a couple of things on the CUP report. Obviously, we agree with staff, the kennel meets all CEQA requirements and we're fine with it. I would like to change Condition Number Two, I believe, to read, I don't know if Holly passed that out to you, what my request was. We would like if, obviously if the variance does not fail, we won't need it, but we would like one year to comply if we have to remove any structures and build other types of things. And I'm only taking that from two projects that just occurred, one of which was on Balcom Canyon, where the applicant did not have a permit, or the permit lapsed in 2000, many, many violations of uses, septic systems, a whole range of things. They were given one year to demo their illegal structures, and they never even had a permit. So I'm just asking for the same thing. It won't take us that long if you deny the variance, but I would like that, and that's the only change we would have on that. As far as responses to the variance request, you can see on my page two, I've just, staff indicated there was one other similarly zoned parcel, designated parcel. Now, I'll be honest with you, I have no idea how to work this thing. If staff could put up the large aerial. Yeah, that one, that one should be good. You can see the house up on top, okay. There's a little house up on top there, you can see, I can't point to it, but you can see north of, north of the blue line for the Benizra property. It's attached to another 19 acres, as staff has indicated in their staff report, and it's been in ag, it still is in ag, and all the rest of the same ownership property is in ag. You'll notice that it would have to comply with the scenic requirements of anything that would be put in front of it, so I think it's 1.4 acres, 1.5, a little smaller than the Benizra property, that in order to do something other than ag on the property, they would have to remove current ag and put it on the front and be subject to scenic highway requirements of the county's ordinances and plans. As staff has said, Benizra project is at the back of the property and the scenic historic quality of the house is not disturbed, you can't see it from the public, you can only see it from a helicopter view. So for the subject property, staff agrees there would be no conversion of potential agricultural use. For the other property they say is similar, there would be a requirement for that, so therein lies another difference. Staff then states that the property cannot, the fact that the property, the Benizra property cannot support ag is irrelevant. To my way of thinking, it is relevant. Otherwise, what we would be required to do on a non-ag property is to meet all ag requirements. The ag commissioner has said, and staff has said in their, in their CEQA document, this is not an ag piece. 5% coverage is to protect crops from conversion. It excludes greenhouse houses, hot houses, and shade mist structures, as you can see on the filed Figure 3.4, and I'll point out a little bit more of that in just a second. The subject property, as you can see, is surrounded by school district, a baranca, and industrial zoning. It's not shown on there, but the property contiguous is in industrial zoning. So it is more urban than the piece that is north, if you want to call partially urban or at least non-ag, there is no ag surrounding it. That's the first point. The second, the second position was that the applicant, the site is applicant's own choosing, and the standards should have been met originally. I think during the history of it, I explained why it didn't happen originally, it wasn't, it wasn't of a concern, it is now. Staff has acknowledged that they should have, it would have been nice to do a text amendment so that we wouldn't need to do this, and that basically greenhouse houses, hoop structures, and all of that do not even require a building permit. Greenhouses do, hoop structures, mist shade structures do not. Special privilege. Staff admits that the lot coverage standard table is slightly misleading, and was not intended to apply solely to the residential development. So we should have been aware that the misleading information was something that we should have corrected, or it should have been corrected, we don't know. But it was misleading, or it is misleading, or maybe it's not. I can explain that in a minute. Staff states that the CUP is an exception to uses expressly permitted. My reading of the zoning ordinance is that the project is allowed by CUP. I do not know what legally exception means. It's allowed. Staff states that we believe the property is more like, if we believe the property is more like the contiguous industrial zoning, then we should go for a general plan amendment and zone change. However, this 1.9 acre piece is in SOAR, ain't going to happen. We think that it was erroneously put into SOAR, and I argued that point back then, that these small pieces should never have been put in, but did not prevail. Our desire for covers, they've been there, they've worked, we don't think that at this point we should be burdened. You have a picture of a portable cover, and I think Commissioner Onstott mentioned, you can have as many as you want if they're portable. We don't want as many as we, we don't want to cover it, just want to leave it like it is, as the first 10 years of the property and project, when we didn't even know about this, or couldn't have known about it, or weren't told about it. There was a comment in your report that somehow or other we missed filing some kind of processing requirement. I do apologize, we never got a complete incompleteness letter or a request since last October that they needed it, so kindly they took care of it, I appreciate that. Also, while I'm thinking about it, Scott O'Connor letter, I have no idea who he is or what that letter is all about, but we can get back to that if it's not a problem, so I don't even want to know. Okay, concerns, my concerns, this is personal, my concerns and my disappointment in the process was that I asked for years to put the history of the compliance agreement and text amendment into the documents. You never saw it until I mentioned today, that I know of, it's not in the record, it's now in the record. I asked in the compliance agreement for an addition of information that if the county delays us, we should get that time back. Okay, they wouldn't do that, so now we're kind of stuck with this 30-day thing. So now we're kind of stuck with this 30-day thing. And I was told that the county can unilaterally extend the timeframes in the compliance agreement. I'm asking today that you extend it for the year as we have. So we, until, we basically have, were not really engaged a whole lot in the process. I never knew what the responses to the variance were going to be until I found it at 6:30 on my computer, 6:30 on Thursday night. I had no inkling. I had no idea where they were going with it. And that was just kind of a disappointment. Since we don't have any opposition or anything, let me conclude with maybe a couple of things. When the issue of covers was discovered in 2011, we were encouraged to withdraw our original variance while the staff processed a text amendment. That would make dog houses, dog crates, kennel covers, a situation like hoop structures, mist shade structures exempt from lot coverage standards. We waited two and a half years. Now the gauntlet has been set down. The ag commissioner has written often, yet 5% lot coverage is still demanded. There's no loss of ag, and the covers are invisible from anybody except your helicopter. Clearly, this is not an ag productive property, given its small size, in spite of what we think is inappropriate or just wrong land use and wrong zoning. There's nothing we can do about that. When we require the save agricultural production standards at all costs on a situation like this in SOAR, it's just not right. It's not fair. It's not right. And I believe that staff agreed that this was inequitable. Now, it wasn't their fault that they couldn't get it accomplished, but I think here we have today a way to get it accomplished. You use the city standards, the report used the city standards for potential historical context of the house. Let's use the city standard for agricultural coverage, which is 50%, or let's use the adjacent industrial coverage, which is 35%. Why require the strict 5% or the calculated amount, lot coverage standards, in this case, to the detriment? I think it's important to note that this 5% excludes greenhouses, hot houses, and shade mist structures. You can see that on the footnote number three of figure 3.4. Therefore, that lot coverage of 5% is not true. It can be 75%. It maybe can be 90%. As long as no ag production is removed, we aren't moving, removing any ag, the 5% is for homes, farmworker units, and the like to control population and limit the removal of ag from productive ag land. So why not use the code for positive here? Let's exclude dog houses, crates, and covers. Let Mr. Benezra have this, what I consider a very minor variance. I think we've proved the case, a ponderance of evidence, that there's nothing wrong with doing this, and that we're here today to clear up everything so that he can move on with his business and hopefully enjoy the fruits of his labor for the next decade. That's all I have. If there's any other question or any questions, I'll definitely try to answer them.
Commissioner Anstott?
Do we have a photograph of these shade structures anywhere? I thought, the one I saw was the temporary, a temporary one.
I don't know if staff took a picture of them or not. They're, they're basically posts.
Well, here what you're saying. First of all, do we have a photograph?
I don't, I don't have one.
Can you comment on the cost of construction of these structures?
Pardon me?
Can you comment on the cost of construction of these structures?
Plywood and wood, I don't know, David. $25,000? For the portable or for the all of them? All of them. $5,000 more or less. Do the work yourself. There's no building permit required.
Anybody else has a question, go ahead while I'm waiting. Commissioner Dugus?
Do you have a copy of your presentation besides, besides this? What you, what you told us? You know, it seemed like you were reading from prepared notes.
Well, those were, I was looking at that, and my conclusions are just my notes.
You said that from this?
How many, how many times do you think I have read the zoning ordinance and the general plan?
Well, the reason why, the reason why I asked this is because I perked up my ears when you said that you had a chance, you had no way of knowing which way the staff report was going to go. You got it on Thursday. I'm sensitive to how, how fast you have to work and everything else that you have to do, you know, in order to respond this. I've been in that situation before. And where time is the enemy. I'm thinking if I had a chance to give this its due weight and your arguments, and then I could perhaps be in, in better shape to decide whether or not a variance is appropriate. I read the, I read the staff report and, and, but I, I don't feel that I got your information with enough time to really give it the attention it deserves.
I was just going to recommend, if I may, I agree with her. We tend to get this information sometimes at the last minute, but I think the gravitas of this particular situation, I would like to recommend at least a 15-minute recess so I can digest what, not only what he said, but he's presented.
Plus that, plus that picture, if it's available, if we could see, because when I visited the site, I couldn't tell what was what. It was very hard to see. It's planted. I viewed it from the highway. I also viewed it from, you know, the street Ventura Highway. You know, I viewed it from 33, and I viewed it from Ventura Highway. I drove back and forth. And for that part of it, I couldn't, I couldn't tell what the, what the difference was.
Mr. Chair, I would like to entertain a motion for a 15-minute recess.
If I might, before you do, this, all of this information is presented in my application for variance. And reference to all the figures, the footnotes, and all of that. That was my, okay.
Yeah, I read that.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion for 15-minute recess. We probably need that. So we'll take a break, come back in 15 minutes. And back in session, continue on our discussions on this item. Comments from commissioners?
Mr. Pearlman, were you finished with your presentation?
Yes, thank you, but I did get a copy of this letter, and this is not the person we know that lives next door. So, all right.
But it, um...
But it's irrelevant, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Otherwise, nothing else.
And do you have any comments about these photographs that we were provided, the...
No, they're, that's what they are. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on a second.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Maggie?
A couple things. One, you talked about hoops, greenhouses, and hot houses. Well, hoops are for berries.
Pardon me?
Hoops are for berries. That's agriculture.
Right.
Greenhouses is generally for seedlings.
Right.
For agriculture.
Right.
Same with hot houses. So to say that somehow kind of relates to a dog kennel covering versus, that's very much an agricultural type of structure.
Right. No, what I'm saying is, what I was saying is that this is not an agricultural piece. It's only, it's less than two acres.
But you said that, so I'm...
Right. But what I'm saying, what I was saying is that the reason that the 5% in...
I understand that.
Is because you can have buildings. That, that's all. So the 5% really is related to homes, farmworker dwelling, and all that, that are non-agricultural.
But you inferred that, you know, why could you have all these things in ag? Well, because it is ag. That's why. Now, I got another question in your items that you gave us. And maybe staff, it'd be better to answer this, just so I understand it. It reads, "Hi, Steve. I met with the planning managers this morning. Kim determined that we will finalize the compliance agreement and add more time," in parentheses, "one additional year to initial allotment to abate the violation order to allow for the NCO, text amendments that would directly affect the kennel project." Is that your understanding?
Now that you've said it, another year, is that right? Is that...
This is from the material that you gave.
Somebody from staff could maybe respond to that.
Okay. I, I just asked for more than 30 days.
Well, but if I heard you correctly, you alluded to time to, if you couldn't get the variance that you, to take down the structures.
Right.
It seems to me it's more of a way to hold on to see if the NCO, NCZO text amendment is going to be changed. Or both, I'm not sure. Okay, all right.
Any other questions?
No.
Comments from staff?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that email was sent around during the time which Mr. Pearlman had discussed that staff was working with the applicant to discover options that would allow them to move forward through the process. Since that email was sent subsequent to the budget being adopted by the Board of Supervisors, which did not include the NCZO amendments, which would change the animal structure definition, the applicant entered into a compliance agreement with the county after it was clear that, that general plan amendment was not going to be processed. And if you would like for your records, I have a copy of that compliance agreement dated October 24th, 2013.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pearlman, did the applicant want to speak? I don't have a card, but I assume, no, that's fine. I just give them the opportunity. Okay, no other discussion, we'll close the public hearing, I guess, and...
Hang on a second.
Yeah, I was wondering if staff had anything else to say. I'm sorry.
A question for staff. Looking at these pictures. So if they took the four-by-fours that are in the ground and whatever's in the ground, and lifted it all up and put it in cans, that would be okay?
According to the current regulations, that is correct.
How interesting is that?
I do have a number of rebuttals to a number of the points that were raised, if it's okay, the commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I want to back up and give you the history of the project, because I think that got lost in some of the noise here. So when the application for the CUP renewal was submitted, the applicant submitted an outdated site plan. That was the site plan for the original CUP, which did not show what was in fact on the ground out at the site, although our application is explicitly clear and says you are to show all of the existing conditions of your site. That means all of the legal and illegal buildings that were constructed. Ms. Ozde, who was the previous case planner, went out and conducted her site visit, as we do for all discretionary projects. She went out there, she's looking at the site plan, and it's at that point she discovered all the illegal buildings and structures. So then what was issued was a notice of violation saying, hey, you've built these buildings and structures without the necessary permits to do so. There's a number of ways you can abate this, and this is reflected in the incompleteness letter that went out in response to the application's middle. And it was initially indicated that, hey, look, show all the buildings and structures so we can see what is in excess of the current standards, and we'll address that. Well, they showed that. They resubmitted with an accurate site plan, discovered that it was in excess of the regulations. At that point, said, okay, here are the regulations. You're going to have to demo X number of square feet in order to get it into compliance with the regulations for something we could support. It was at that point that Mr. Pearlman approached us and had a meeting with Ms. Ozde and me to discuss this variance application. It was at that meeting, which was in 2012, we indicated, okay, you're going to have a tough sell for us because we don't see how we could support a recommendation of approval for variance because you're going to have some difficulty with the findings. We did go over that with Mr. Pearlman in the meeting, but apparently he forgot about that. He submitted his variance application, reviewed that, that was subject to another round of incompleteness items. And also, what was occurring at the same time was that the long-range planning section was also proposing a number of text amendments to the zoning ordinance. And one of those involves certain changes to the specific issue that is the subject of the variance, that is the max building coverage standards. However, we did not know how the board would go with regard to any specific changes. So what we did is we entered into a compliance agreement, which we're not required to do. That was in an effort to help them out, to see how this would shake out, to see if the board did in fact adopt a work program that would analyze the issue, which would have granted them relief and would not require the variance, then we wouldn't need to process the variance. So we said, let's put this on hold. We entered into the compliance agreement. It was amended a number of times to a lot for additional time as we processed that. We were very flexible. We have not taken any enforcement actions against them during that time. The text amendments were presented to the board. The board did not decide to relax the max building coverage standards. So therefore, but ball was back in Mr. Pearlman's court as to how are you going to proceed with this? Are you going to revise the project so it's something that we could support? Or do you want to proceed with the variance application, knowing that you're most likely not going to get a favorable recommendation from us? He decided to proceed with the variance application. In 2013, the planning director scheduled a meeting with Mr. Pearlman, where we repeated once again the problems we were having with making a favorable recommendation. So the assertion that Mr. Pearlman was not made aware of our objections to the variance finding until last week was, I don't know where that's coming from. Okay, with regard to the statement that the applicant's been billed for the time spent on those proposals to the board about the text amendment, that's just flat-out incorrect. We did not bill that to the applicant, that, and I, if Mr. Pearlman would like to go back through any invoices and take a look at it and see if he can find any charges for the text amendment that was being processed by the long-range planning section, be more than happy to take a look at those bills and consider a refund to that, present that to the planning director. But Mr. Benezra definitely was not charged for that time. Mr. Pearlman made a claim that staff said that there's one ag zone parcel in this area that's just incorrect. If you go to page 23 of the staff report, we clearly acknowledge that there are other ag zone parcels. I don't know where that's coming from. Now, with regard to the definition of CUP, a CUP is an exception to zoning. And I want to read from the Non-C coastal Zoning Ordinance, that's page 254, section 8111-1.2.1.1B, and it defines a conditional use permit as follows. "A conditional use permit is a permit based upon a discretionary decision required prior to initiation of particular uses not allowed as a matter of right. Such permits are subject to site plan review and may be conditioned in order to assure compliance with the requirements of this chapter and with the purposes of applicable zones. Such permits may be denied on the grounds of unsuitable location or may be conditioned in order to be approved." So as the definition states, this is not something that's allowed by a matter of right. These are exceptions to what are typically allowed in these zones. Hence, the conditional on the conditional use permit, it affords you the discretion to apply whatever conditions you might feel are appropriate or necessary in order to allow this use in the zone, which typically is inappropriate for that zone and the uses that are allowed by a matter of right. So I just want to clarify that point. Yeah, just one general comment about the compliance agreement. We have been very flexible with them. Once again, we have changed, we have amended the timelines and the milestones that they had to reach in order to get into compliance. We've been very flexible with them. As I stated earlier, we have not taken any sort of enforcement actions. There have been no civil administrative penalties or anything of that nature taken against them in order to allow them multiple opportunities to try to figure out how they can address this issue. Once again, we afforded them the time to see how that process would shake out at the board. Didn't work out for them. So you're back into the case of the variance. We granted additional time, and they should have plenty of time to satisfy... We granted additional time, and they should have plenty of time to satisfy all the conditions of approval. We're more than willing to entertain changing any of the conditions if they feel that they cannot abide by any of those deadlines. And I will leave it at that. If you have any specific questions, I can address those. I don't know if the planning director has anything else to add.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Commissioner Dukas. I'm going to direct this at staff, because in my mind, this is where I see the crux of what I'm trying to decide. And I believe it's on page 20, which is basically the variances, what we have to, the four things that we have to find. And I'm sure you're very familiar with that. And I've read your arguments of why you disagree with three of them. All right, and I've listened to what Mr. Pearlman has presented. So on my mind, where I'm trying to go with these four, the first one is the fact that special circumc-, even though I agree with what Dan just said as far as the CUP, if I'm going to agree with staff, I have to work on these. And the first one is that it is a special exceptional size-shaped geography. I'm kind of leaning towards agreeing with Mr. Pearlman. Second, granting the request will not confer a special privilege. Now, I'll come back to that one, because that, to me, is the key. Strip application of the minimal parcel size requirements, unnecessary hardship. If I can get past number two, I'm going to agree with number three. I could make that finding. And before such variances will not be detrimental to public health, then I think that would just flow anyway. So I'm going to come back to the special privilege, and that's where I want to talk to staff. I know you have to look at the global county of Ventura when these types of decisions are made, and I understand that. So help me walk through this, why you think in this particular unique situation, given the history, the current use, by agreeing with the applicant for the variance, which confer that special privilege that you're fearful or concerned, I should say is probably a better word, would be extended to the rest of the county. Now, if you need a few minutes to talk back to me, but that's where I'm at in my head. To me, that's the linchpin in the whole deal to either grant or deny the variance for the applicant. The thing is, is it's not pressing. It's just now somebody can come from Lockwood Valley and say, they did it, I want it.
First thing I keep in mind with regard to the parcel size being substandard, there are a number of lots throughout the county that are subject to zoning designations, and the zoning occurred after the lot was created, so, yeah, after the lot was created, such that the lot does not comply with the minimum lot size requirements. In most situations, what applicants, well, excuse me, property owners will do in that situation is they'll do either one of two things. They'll either merge the lot with another one, or they'll do a lot line adjustment. And lot line adjustments, for those of you who work in agricultural industry, know, are fairly common, and we process a lot of those. So we would be inclined to say, okay, in this situation, if you can't meet the minimum lot size requirements in order to satisfy the zoning regulations that you apply to your property, do a lot line adjustment, okay? But don't ask for an exception, this variance, and try to get us to try to twist and turn ourselves into a pretzel to try to make the findings in order to allow this sort of situation. So there is relief in other ways, which do not require the granting of a variance in order to achieve what they want to achieve. And the variance findings are always very difficult, and especially when it comes to this special privilege being granted to somebody. So what we do is, in this sort of situation, we're looking around, we're saying, okay, all right, what exists out there? And also, you touched on the point of, okay, if we support this variance finding, we lead property owners to believe that this is something that we can support in the future. We are always cognizant of what are the unintended consequences. Is this going to be opening up the floodgates to other sorts of situations where other people also could come in and say, hey, look, you supported it there. Why don't you give us our variance for our situation here? It is a slippery slope argument, and it does present a difficult issue, so. I don't know if the planning director has anything else to add to that.
What I would say is that, you know, we issued the original CUP in good faith, right? It didn't have these violations associated with it. When it came back for its time extension, they once again were not shown on the site plan. If at any time the applicant were to come in to the counter to saying, I would like to apply to cover my lot more than the general plan allows you to do, the answer would have been no, and he wouldn't have expended the $5,000 in building it, and we wouldn't be here trying to figure out how to give him a benefit for what is essentially illegal construction, right? It's very difficult. So we're trying to make a finding for a variance based on the fact that these structures were put there illegally. And had they come in at any time, the answer would have been no. So, right, and so, you know, I understand that it's a difficult situation, and I, like Mr. Pearlman, also like to use the code for positive, right? But the code is what it says, right, and the general plan is what it says. And these things that he is asking for relief for do not look like they are things that could be or should be interpreted in the code. The board has already spoken on the exceptions to the rule for lot coverage, and the exceptions are greenhouses, hot houses, shade structure, and the like, not dog kennels. So that's what I'd add to that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Dukas.
What's staff's response to the request for a year instead of 30 days?
I don't have any issues with that. I mean, I think that we worked really in good faith, trying to really give him the benefit of the doubt, trying to work out the situation. And so I don't have an issue giving him more time to take the shade structures down or have them meet the code requirements, if that's what your desire is.
What is the, question for staff, what is the process if the variance is denied? Is there an appeal to that?
Yes, your decision is appealable to the Board of Supervisors, provided that the applicant or any other interested party files an appeal within 10 days following the decision.
So it's a standard appeal process we deal with?
That's correct.
So if there was a change in the, in staff's recommendation, and as Commissioner Dukas asked about, that timeline would be frozen until an appeal was completed, if an appeal is filed?
That's correct. I don't know if the language is already in the compliance agreement. Typically, we do have that sort of out, but if it isn't, we would be, we definitely would amend the compliance agreement to a lot sufficient time to get this to the board for the board's consideration. So, in other words, we wouldn't compromise their ability to file an appeal and have the appeal heard by the board. You know, that would be fair to the applicant.
Commissioner Dukas.
And the updated kennel license providing that, that's already included, and that's something that's already been vetted as part of the CUP?
Chair Rodriguez, Commissioner Dukas, the additional language that would require the submittal of the kennel license part of the zoning clearance was vetted through several meetings with the Director and Deputy Director of Animal Services and several discussions, basically that center around-
Okay, so it's nothing new. I just put it in my notes, and I thought, where'd that come from?
It was based on an updated meeting that occurred last week, and it was not documented as part of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we close the public hearing.
Can I ask for clarification?
Sure, come on, we'll open it for your comments.
Thank you. Question. Mr. Weisner, on your comment and the special privilege, you mentioned being countywide. Am I mistaken in that a variance is vicinity-wide versus county-wide?
Thank you.
Staff, I don't want to put words in your mouth or a county council.
It is within the vicinity. However, what we have to take into consideration is not, I wasn't bringing that point up with regard to making the findings for the variance. I was bringing that point up in the context of public service and providing public information and providing people with accurate direction about what they will likely expect when they submit an application to us and what sort of recommendation they will receive from us. So if your commission was to make a decision which would be, change our perspective on what we believe is an appropriate variance for application, we would be likely to convey that information to future people who come in and say, hey, I'm considering this variance application. What has been the history or success of similar types of variance applications that have been presented to the Planning Commission? We would state, well, in fact, there was this application that was just submitted so long ago, and the Planning Commission did support that one, so.
So vicinity. Thank you.
Okay, well, let me follow up with staff, if I may, Mr. Chair. Our definition of vicinity. I caught you in the middle of a drink. Sorry about that, Doug.
There is no hard and fast definition. I'm trying to get to the staff report discussion of what was considered. We definitely did look at the properties within proximity to the site, especially taking into consideration those which are also subject to the North Ventura area plan. We looked at the types of agricultural lots that surround the site, as well as the non-agricultural ones, to see what does exist out there. So, yes, we did consider that. The vicinity was generally within the upper half roughly of the North Ventura Avenue area. And focusing on properties that had same zoning designations, only at use designations as a property.
So what I'm hearing is the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance doesn't have a hard and fast-
No.
-tenth of a mile, two miles?
That's correct.
It's a matter of judgment by the plannings.
Discussion, further discussion?
What I would do would be to deny the variance based on the information that we received, but approve the CUP per staff recommendations with condition two being changed from 30 days to one year to give him time to comply.
I would second that.
Just chair discussion. As both the applicant and staff, it's one of these unique situations. I go back to the lumberyard situation in Camarillo that we have. We have narrow, unique properties that have historically been caught between legal not conforming, cannot be productive, but they're zoned X, Y, and Z. And so then a situation develops that they're operated. Then we get the strict adherence of the law that's implied. But those of us that live in that world, ignorance of the law, does not apply kind of situation. And I do not believe the applicant at any time acted in bad faith. So, but here we are on the horns of the proverbial dilemma. It is my initial reaction to really say it's not a special privilege because of the uniqueness of the property and the situation. And if you want me to recuse myself because I'm a dog lover, but that's a, I don't think that has influenced my opinion. I reluctantly will support the motion, and with the hope that, within the year, the Non-Coastal Zoning Ordinance and restrictions that have been repeatedly discussed are dealt with.
I'd like to say, I guess I'm troubled by the application, the original application, and the comments I've heard today, that the original application was inaccurate when it was submitted for approval. But for the fact that there's a site visit, it might otherwise have been processed accordingly. I mean, it was pretty specific on the amount of coverage that was allowed into the CUP and recognizing that building permits aren't required below 1,000, anything less than 1,000 feet. And itself doesn't do a carte blanche, give carte blanche green light to go beyond what's authorized by the CUP. I'm troubled by that, and it went beyond extensively, anyway. It is a tough situation, but I'm inclined to follow staff's recommended action on this. Do we have a vote? Do we have any more comments? Okay, the motion passes, and that'll include the amendment by Commissioner Dukas. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight. Report by planning director, staff actions, other matters.
So Chair Rodriguez, just to report to your board, you might have already read it in the paper, but the Hauser appeal for the Tigers in Malibu, that did happen. It was submitted, I want to say, last Friday. So we will be processing that to the board. It's an appealable in the coastal zone, so that makes it free for the applicant, which is a burden on the county. But, you know, we did so much work for the Planning Commission that we will just be forwarding a lot of that work onto the board. It's a de novo hearing, so I'll report back to you, or you'll read it in the paper about how that goes. And then also, you know, about every year or every other year, we try to do a training opportunity for the planning commissioners and share with you some of the things that we're working on and also do some training on things that you would be interested in. So I'd like you to think about anything that you may like to be trained on, any section or particular area of the law, anything in sequo, you know, something particular to you, and then we'll get Jeff working on it. So if there's, if there's something specific, otherwise we'll start looking maybe out later towards the summer and putting together an agenda that we'll be sharing with you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Madam Director, two things. Any obvious updates within sequo because of the constant threatening by Sacramento to simplify and make it easier? But I know there's certain court cases coming down, we're probably in the tubes. So just an update on particularly the, well, whatever would be applicable to us. Secondly, is the comparison of the coastal zoning orders and a differentiation of what is allowed. In other words, what are the differences as opposed to what is a similar? So I think as we're going to see more and more of like what's coming next week or not, to apply one standard here, one standard here, and then we have these unique situations that come along. So just the fundamental differences between the two zoning ordinances.
Right, and that's a big program that we're working on right now, right? We're right in the middle of a very large local coastal plan update, and the local coastal plan is made up of the coastal area plan and the coastal zoning ordinance. And so we're in a years-long process. We did phase one that you all weighed in on. And so probably the beginning of next year, we'll be back and show you all the work that we've done. We're out in the community right now, and that effort is to try to bring the codes more in line with each other. It's always been quite a challenge to find the money and the time and the staff to really go through the Coastal Commission process to update your LCP. So we're working on that right now to bring those more in line with signage, with film permits, with parking, you know. And so we're out in the community right now, so we will have a good handle on that. But you'll receive a comprehensive update on our LCP sometime early next year.
How about wild animals?
Teenagers?
Well, that will be decided, right, at the board, so that question will be put in front of them also at your recommendation about whether we should have some standards for that. So they'll be wrestling with that at their hearing as well.
There you go.
So do you have anything for me?
I understand we will have a meeting on the 17th, but it will not contain what we know is supposed to be coming.
Right, yeah, we won't.
It won't be all day.
Yeah. That hearing on the 17th, it was on your tentative for, it was called Tropical Paradise. It's a wedding venue in Santa Rosa, but it wasn't legal yet. And the applicant's rep, who happens to be Mr. Pearlman, has asked for a delay to allow them some time. The CUP doesn't expire, I don't believe, until December, so they have plenty of time to-
So all we're hearing is the continuance.
Yeah, a continuance. Well, it wasn't even legal, so it's not really a continuance. It was just, you know, it's just not going to be heard. So we're going to have one item, which is an item that your Planning Commission granted a continuance of last time about decking in the coastal area. Okay, that's all I have.
If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. 10:30?